Your trustee Fernando Ferreira, thank you for being here with us. Bob Mojica is in the building, I saw him, so I'm sure he will join us. And Lorraine is on an airplane, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
She'll hopefully will be with us later, but we'll have to see how the plane schedule goes.
Chair Thompson will be along, since he is a member of the Investment Committee. And I'd also like to acknowledge Professor Conway, who is here. She is the faculty representative. I forgot, there's Yuna sitting across from me, I didn't acknowledge her, so.
And that's all right.
Cecilia's here. And our new student representative, Chica, is not yet here.
Chica is someplace, I see her moving around.
That means I don't have to say her last name, so. Just acknowledge Chica.
You see Chica outside?
But she's not in this meeting.
Yeah, she's not a member of this committee.
We have an agenda, and you all have it. Under Action Items, we have the approval of the minutes, and I'll move their approval.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have approved the minutes. The policy calendar is empty this evening, so we don't have to address any of those. And I'll now turn to the Information Items. We have two. And the first will be a report from Vice Chancellor Sapienza with respect to budget and fiscal planning. And let me also acknowledge a representative from the Council of Presidents, President Rodriguez. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair Schwartz, and welcome everyone. Glad to start another academic year, and welcome to our new members, and thank you to our continuing members. And of course, thank you to Chair Schwartz for his leadership on this committee. I wanted to give an update on where we are in terms of the budget. And this is the time of the year, in early fall, where we are working very directly on three different fiscal years. And so, I'll take them in chronological order, and start with fiscal year 2016. So fiscal year 2016 technically ended for us on June 30th, but both the state comptroller and the city comptroller allow us three months to formally close our books. And so, we're working on that now, we're getting very close to finalizing the year end. I'm very pleased to report that all of our colleges will end the year in a positive condition, so that's a good thing. And our external auditors from KPMG are here, and have begun their work for the year-end close. We've been working very hard in our office on putting together the financial statements for the year end. They are due by October 31st, and there is a meeting of the Audit Subcommittee that's been scheduled for late October. And so, things are going very well in terms of closing out fiscal year 16. Let me move now to fiscal year 17, the current fiscal year that we're in. At our June meeting, we had talked about how we were working on college allocations, and the college allocations were issued over the summer to both the senior colleges and the community colleges. On the senior colleges, there is a 2% reallocation target.
Attention, attention please. Attention, attention please. This is the Fire Safety Director. This is a test of the fire alarm system. Please disregard all audio and visual fire alarm signals. An announcement will be made at the conclusion of the test. Thank you for your cooperation.
Nothing like live television, right?
Yes. So, the senior colleges, and we did have a 2% reallocation target for the senior colleges this year. I think as most of you know, we had a shortfall in our mandatory needs expenses for the current year, as well as no new funding for some of the new initiatives that we were implementing for this academic year. And also, no new revenue from tuition for the current year. So that necessitated this 2% reallocation target from the senior colleges. We're of course also reducing administrative expenses at the system office, both central office and shared services centers. And so, by doing that, we're able to keep the reduction at the senior colleges to 2%. For the community colleges, it's a more positive situation with the addition of state base aid this year, and with the support we got from the City of New York for the community colleges, and some of the key initiatives like ASAP. Community colleges are actually receiving a budget increase this year. The total, the aggregate total for all the community colleges is about $10.6 million. And all seven of our community colleges are receiving budget increases year to year. So again, we're very pleased to report that. So, we'll begin our monitoring of the colleges and their spending. Colleges will be submitting their financial plans to us in a couple of weeks. We always ask for it in September, so that the colleges have the opportunity to consult with elected student and faculty leaders. And so, that monitoring process and financial process has begun, and will continue throughout the year. I want to address, in talking about the current fiscal year, the collective bargaining, because I know that's on everyone's mind. And I know that our trustees approved the labor agreements at the June board meeting. The allocations have not been given out, funds have not been given out to our campuses yet for the collective bargaining costs. We've been working over the last several weeks, going back to, you know, when the contract agreements were in place, with the state comptroller's office and with the city office of payroll administration, to determine when the payouts can begin for these labor agreements, for our union members. And in October, we'll be making the payments for the ratification bonus. There was a $1,000 ratification bonus that was agreed to as part of the labor agreements for full-time employees, prorated amounts for part-time employees. So those will be paid out in October. And then in January, the payments will be given out for all of the retroactive pay for our union employees, going back, you know, several years, as well as the salary increases. They will be implemented in January as well, salary increases that are effective as per the contract. So those will be done in January. As the pay dates are formally established, and as we get closer to those payments being given out, we will then allocate the funds to the colleges in the current year to cover those costs. So they haven't been allocated yet, but funds have been reserved and will be given out as we get closer to the pay dates. And so, the next fiscal year that I want to talk about is the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2018, because we're also working on that, and we're working on our budget request fiscal year 2018. And I want to make sure that all the committee members are aware that at our next meeting, which will take place on October 5th, that we will be presenting to you our budget request for fiscal year 2018. And so, what we've been doing is beginning that consultation process. I know several of our trustees were at the University Student Senate Retreat last month, where we had a good discussion about the budget for next year, and tuition. And so, thanked the trustees that were there, and thanked the University Student Senate for a good discussion on that. We'll be meeting with the University Faculty Senate later in the month. We had a discussion today at Council of Presidents about it, and the committee that President Matos Rodriguez chairs for the Fiscal Committee of Council of Presidents will be meeting next week. So we've begun that consultation process, and we'll be presenting the budget request to you all at our next meeting on October 5th. So that's where we are in terms of the budget. Have to take any questions if there are any.
I have one, sorry, Cecilia.
I have two, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay. The collective bargaining agreement that you referenced, when does it expire?
The District Council 37 and their affiliated unions, it expires shortly. That contract went back to 2009, and it was a seven-year deal, so it will expire later this calendar year, 2016. For the faculty union, PSC, it was also a seven-year agreement, but their contract had expired in 2010, and so, that contract won't expire until 2017. I believe the date is in fall of 2017, October of 2017.
And how, if at all, does the coming expirations of those contracts impact your budget planning for '18?
Well, it's something that we need to keep in mind when we're doing our, as you said, budget request for '18, and doing our multi-year planning for the years that follow. You know, we have to be concerned with the out-year cost of the current labor agreement, and as well, as you point out, the fact that there could be, there will be new labor agreements at some point that will affect those fiscal years. So, yeah, that's certainly part of our planning.
Attention, attention please. This is your Fire Safety Director. This has been a test of the fire alarm system. The test has concluded. Thank you for your cooperation. All future fire alarms will be live. Thank you.
Let me just welcome Trustee Mojica and Chair Thompson to our meeting. We've approved the minutes, and we heard a report from Vice Chancellor Sapienza. Cecilia.
So my two questions. The first one, you know it's going to be about tuition, so.
Sure.
How does that figure? And then the second question is about the allocations. I know that you said that some, that you have funds reserved, but where are they coming from? If you could give us a clear picture on that?
Sure. Regarding the first question, I think as most folks here know, but I'm glad you raised it, Cecilia, because it is a critical issue. The predictable tuition policy that was enacted by the State of New York in 2011 formally expired this past June 30th. This year's state budget did not include an extension of the predictable tuition policy. The governor had included it in his executive budget, but was not in the final enacted budget of the legislature. And so, this year, we didn't have the ability to raise tuition at our senior colleges. CUNY, in last year's budget request, had included and went to its board at the time to get authorization to include an extension of the predictable tuition policy for another five years. So we've been public as to why we think it's important to include that in our budget, and to have an extension of that policy take place at the state level. And so, that's something that, you know, we'll address in the budget request that we're going to present to you all next month.
We can expect, we can expect possible.
Yeah, you know, the budget request is not finalized yet, but as, you know, as I discussed with the students last month, that this is something that we think is critical. And, you know, whether it looks like what we proposed last year, or maybe something different, is to be determined. But we think an extension of predictable tuition policy is critical.
Do you have a second question, Cecilia?
And your second question regarding collective bargaining. Thank you Chair Schwartz. Last year's, the revenue from the last year of the tuition increase at our senior colleges for fall 2015, we set aside all of the revenue for, from that increase, it was about $40 million last year. It's been sitting in a reserve, as well as the revenue, that continuing revenue into this year. All of those funds have been set aside, and will be used to, and will be allocated to the senior colleges for use this year. Universities also reserve funds, and we do have support from the state, our state and city funding partners as well. So all of those resources will be used in the current year to allocate to the colleges to cover the collective bargaining costs.
Thank you.
Trustee Clark.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out, we hear about that it's been reserved, but you haven't given us a ballpark figure in terms of what DC 37 retroactive would be, and what PSC would be, so that we have a sense of. You said the money is in reserve, so if we know what it is, then we have a sense of what the lay of the land is. Is there a reason that we're not getting numbers?
Yeah, no, no, the total retroactive cost for the senior colleges is about $250 million. And the total retroactive cost for the community colleges, I believe, is around $55 million. I don't have the breakout off the top of my head in terms of how much of that is for PSC, and how much of that is for DC 37, but.
Attention, attention. This is your Fire Safety Director. We are testing the low-rise, the low-rise elevators, so can you please stand by for 10 minutes, 10, 15 minutes? After the testing, we will make an announcement.
We don't need to put the Fire Safety Director in the minutes, by the way. So.
He's on the tape. And your comment, not putting that it's on the tape too.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Trustee Clark, about $250 million for the senior colleges, about $55 million for the community colleges. If you like to break up our union, we certainly could provide that to you.
I just wanted to have a sense of what the dollars look like, because you said it's in reserve, and, okay.
Can I ask one follow-up question, Cecilia, and then Trustee Mojica?
Sure.
In the current budget, what percentage of the operating revenue in that budget is attributed to tuition?
For the current year, at the community colleges, it's around 40%. And again, I can get you the exact, it's around 40%. At the senior colleges, it's also around 40, it's probably in the low 40s, somewhere between 40 and 45%. But we can get you the actual, we can get you the actual numbers.
That'd be helpful, thanks. Trustee Mojica.
Just to follow up on that, and the remainder is from where? So 40% is from tuition, the remainder comes from?
Yeah, overall, at the university level, about 10% comes from the City of New York. That, for the current fiscal year, I believe about 46% comes from the state, 44% comes from tuition. That's at the university level. At the community colleges, the senior colleges, a little different. At the community colleges, the largest share of the three funding sources is tuition. At senior colleges, the state aid is greater than the amount of tuition. But overall, at the university level, for the current year, it's 46 state, 44 tuition, 10 city.
When you. Part of tuition is TAP.
Correct. And as Mark points out, it's a great point. When we talk about tuition, we're also including the amount that students get from the state's Tuition Assistance Program. So that's part of the tuition numbers that we're giving, that we're providing.
So that doesn't count as state funding, you're counting that as tuition?
We counted as tuition and not state funding, yeah. Last year, during our budget process, our faculty representative, Terry Martel at the time, had asked us to break that out. And we actually put together a good pie chart that showed if you peel off tuition and included estate funds, what the pies look like. And so, that's something that we could do for our budget request.
Sure, what's the pie look like? What's the, what did the pie look like then?
More, there was more state support.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, there was more state support. I don't recall the, you know, what our tuition went from in terms of 44%, how much it went down to. But it's a significant portion that, you know, is provided by the state for the TAP program.
Can we just present it that way in the budget request?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. We, last year.
So we can see what real estate funds are versus tuition.
Can I make this suggestion?
Sure.
Between now and October 5th, when you intend to present the budget, could we, could you circulate to this committee the existing pie chart that you put together for Professor Martel last year, so you can see the current budget, what that looks like?
Yeah.
As compared to what we're going to be asked to review and approve.
Sure, as well as, I would say, some of the other questions that have come up, that, you know, that Member Clark brought up, and others in writing also to the committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, one more.
Yes, sir.
So, do you do a multi-year financial plan when you submit the budget request? Do you show what the out-years are going to look like as well?
Historically, our budget request has been only for the next year. We certainly do internal multi-year financial planning, but our budget request, when we provide the budget request and present it to the trustees, it's only for the next year.
So when the collective bargaining agreements expire in '16, and then '17? Presumably, if there's a request for tuition, whatever it is, you have collective bargaining agreements expire in '16, and then '17, and then presumably, there's going to be some agreement.
Right.
Do we keep any, is there anticipation to you to keep any reserves, or anticipate what the need would be post-'16 and '17 to fund any future negotiations, so that we don't end up in the same place with no identified funds going forward? Or what the need is going forward, because the rational tuition policy last time was a five-year plan?
Right. We, in our internal planning, we're certainly including the costs for future collective bargaining increases in there. You know, we, you have some sense of what the increases could be, although we don't know yet, because we do do pattern bargaining. We try to stay as close as possible to the state and city agreements. And so, obviously, we're making an estimate at this point, but in our internal financial planning, we're certainly including those costs.
Any other, yes, sir.
Further to almost everybody's question, is there a reason why we're not getting multi-year looks at where we are today, where we are in the year, projecting our revenues from whatever source?
Yeah.
Projecting our needs? That would be useful, I think, to our conversation.
Yeah, and we certainly could provide that to you. You know, we could provide that as part of the budget request that we do next month. We could show you what the out-year implications are, so.
In the normal course of events?
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely, happy to do so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we can turn to the second report, which will come from Dean Robert Pachek, and I believe he has. Claire Norton is with him too. Welcome.
Thank you.
This is a report on enrollment for us.
Claire Norton is the University's Director of Admissions, and she's going to join me for this presentation, which will be up on your screen momentarily. Is it on the screen what we have at our desk? It should be, yeah. Well, it is in front of you, and it should be on the screen, I hope. So, the fire marshal's looking.
Hopefully, it has more success than he does with the elevators, okay.
So, before I get to the most current enrollment status, what I wanted to do was just take a couple of minutes to give you a context for where we are now in fall 2016. Last year, last fall, our enrollment was slightly less than 275,000. 30,000 of those were graduate students, the remainder were undergraduate. That number was slightly down from the peak year of 2014, when we broke the 275 barrier, which is the highest enrollment of CUNY. The really significant piece to this is that between 2008 and 2014, the university increased by about 30,000 students, which is essentially the size of Columbia University. So we basically grew a Columbia University with, between those years. Our undergraduate enrollment increased 32,000, our graduate enrollment decreased by about 2,000, netting the 30,000 student number. We're also very proud that during that period of enrollment growth, baccalaureate colleges increased the academic quality of entering students as measured by SAT scores and high school averages. And those of you who are conversing with the SAT world, we believe that the entering class this year, or the admitted class at Peru College, will have an SAT mean of about 1280, which is approaching Ivy League standards. Undergraduate enrollment growth between those years of 2008 and 2014 was primarily a result of better retention of current students, and increases in the number of new freshmen, new transfers, and in students coming back to the university. Students being readmitted who had left the individual colleges. Last fall, our colleges enrolled over 37,000 freshmen and over 25,000 transfers, both record numbers. And here's where things start to get a little bit sticky. As a proxy for applicant demand, the number of application fees, which are fees from freshman applicants and from transfers outside of CUNY, so we don't charge our internal transfers any fee, that number declined between 2012, '13, and 2015, '16 by about 11,000, which is about 7 or 8% of our application base. So essentially, our colleges were able to yield larger freshman and transfer classes from a smaller base of total applicants. Part of this is that we, through better technology and efficiencies, were able to admit more students. But the colleges also do the last part of the job, which is the tough part, which is to turn admitted students into enrolled students.
Excuse me, Bob, and it also sounds like the yield also was a, in terms of academic profile, a higher profile of the student body, correct?
That's correct. And as the profile gets more, as the achievement level increases, it's tougher to yield the same ratio, because those students have more choice, basically. Now, the master's enrollment, there was a slightly different picture during that six-year period, where we had a decrease of about 2,000 students. Now, that decrease was influenced by, I don't want to say caused by, but it was influenced by a decrease in the interest in teacher education programs and in business graduate programs. It's a national trend, this is something that we see across the country. Also, the economy improved during that period, so people who would make a choice between working or staying in a job and going back to school were more likely to continue in their jobs than to go to school. And we've seen increased competition, both from traditional brick and mortar universities and from online programs. We have, over the last couple of years, created a small unit to, thank you, to try to increase master's enrollment. And this year, for the first time, and you'll see these numbers in a moment, we will have an increase in new master's students, first time, I think, in the last five years. So let me move now to where we are for the current semester, which started on August 27th, I believe. And the numbers I'm going to give you are enrollment numbers as of September 2nd, and I picked that date because that's the end of the add-drop period. That's basically when the students in degree programs are there, and we don't add many more students. There will be some more high school students enrolled, and some more students in contract courses, but by September 7th, the eighth day of the semester, the enrollment is pretty stable. So, in total, the university is down, and this is a year-to-year, date-to-date comparison, down by about 4,400 students. One-third of the decrease is at the senior colleges, two-thirds at the community colleges. Undergraduates make up most of the decrease. Graduate students on this table show a very slight decrease, but for some technical reasons that I'm not going to go into, there are a number of institutions for whom these numbers are not included, whose numbers are not included in these totals. When we add in those institutions, which includes the new Graduate School of Public Health, our graduate enrollment will be up, and our number of grad, new graduate students will be up by a couple of hundred, again, the first time in years. Our new freshmen decreased by about 830 from last year, our new transfers decreased. Now, you might ask, you'd certainly be interested in why we think we've had this decrease. Well, a number of factors, and again, it's not any one single, single cause. One is we had a smaller spring enrollment. So as the enrollment decreases, you get a compounding effect. If we had fewer students here in the spring, and we maintain the same return rate, we'll have a smaller number the next fall. A very good reason for the decrease, or a positive reason, is that in the four-year period between 2010-2011 academic year and 2014-2015 academic year, our colleges produced 4,449 new. 4,449 new additional associate and baccalaureate graduates. So, we've increased the graduation rates, certainly ASAP program have done that. The community colleges and the senior colleges have also been successful in retaining and graduating more students. The problem for enrollment management is, as you graduate more students, you have to replace more students. So you have to, one, either increase your retention rate, and our retention rates are getting up pretty high at the senior colleges, so it's harder to move the needle, or increase the number of new freshmen, new transfers, and readmitted students. So that's the problem we face now. Again, the improved economy, especially here at the community colleges, many students will take an entry-level job or start an associate degree program. The more likely they are to find jobs, the less likely they are to go to college. We in, at CUNY, are seeing a tremendous increase in the amount of competition. We have, I believe in clerical, correct me if I'm wrong, three or four SUNY institutions now have full-time recruiters who live and work in the city of New York, and what they do is try to recruit graduates of New York City high schools to go to SUNY. There are, I'll use maybe a word that I shouldn't, but there's a desperation among many of the private institutions in this area. We all saw that Dowling College closed within the last couple of months. There are many privates that are going to have to really work hard to stay in business, and they are increasingly going after the same students we're going after. The, and this is a nationwide figure, I don't have figures for the local colleges, but I believe the discount rate, which is the degree to which the published tuition is discounted, so the actual, the price that a student pays to go to a college across the country is now about 50% of the listed tuition. So colleges are really cutting their prices, and nobody will get to a level that CUNY is in terms of tuition, but they get closer.
They're not cutting the sticker price. The sticker price.
Sticker price stays the same, the retail price, the sale price.
The actual price.
Yes.
Is what you just said, and therefore the net revenue to the colleges is what's in jeopardy for the colleges.
We are also facing much more competition from online institutions and hybrid institutions, brick-and-mortar institutions that have online programs. It's no secret that we are not a leader in this area. I think we hope to become a leader over the next few years, but can't say that we are now. And, you know, finally, we have, we here in the enrollment management office don't have the resources we have. As you said, we had 11,000 fewer applications, and I don't know if you want to go into this, the admissions process, by and large, is funded as an income fund reimbursable process. So basically, we use the application fees to fund the process. So if we have fewer fees, we have less money, and this hasn't been a time when the university was able to just make up for the loss in revenue so that we have fewer people in the admissions process.
And Bob, absent a waiver, our fee is $65, is that correct?
Yes. $65 for freshmen, $70 for transfers from outside of CUNY, no fee for transfers within CUNY.
And for the $65 at the undergraduate level, applicants can apply up to six CUNY institutions.
Just as a comparison, SUNY, which has a centralized process, charges students $50 per college. So our students average about 4.2, 4.3 colleges. So, you know, if nothing changed and we apply the SUNY pricing model, it would cost students about $200 or $225. I believe they wouldn't apply to as many colleges, but SUNY still gets a lot more than we do, you know, for doing similar work. So the last slide is, you know, I just put this together because in the orientation, we talked about some potential policy issues that the trustees might, you know, might need or want to consider in terms of enrollment, and some of them are listed here. One, what is the right size of the university? We have grown over the last decades. I gave you the numbers on the growth between 2008 and 2014. Do we want to continue to grow, or are we at the size where we should be? And within that, there are some colleges that could conceivably be larger than their optimum size. You know, a president could certainly weigh in on whether, you know, Queens College is more efficient at 20,000 students than 18,000 students or 19,000 students. These are complex questions, but it's not clear that every college is exactly the right size to be the most efficient institution it could be. We also have the issue of size versus academic quality. It could be relatively easy for our senior colleges to grow if they were willing to lower admission standards. It's not something that this university has encouraged or even accepted as a practice over the last decade and a half. It also has an effect on community colleges. If it's easier to get into the city college, then students could be drawn away from Bronx Community, BMCC, and so on. So there's a lot of interrelationship there. The issue of diversity, it's the reality in the city of New York that students in the high schools, who are academically better prepared, are more likely to be white and Asian students. Black and Latino students are likely to have lower SAT scores, lower college admissions averages. We live in a world where the SAT mean is a very important indicator.
Thank you.
For universities that are compared one to another. So the issue of diversity is one that we certainly have to consider. I got an answer to this question from the chancellor earlier, but I'll raise it here anyway. In which markets do we want to compete? We get most of our students from the city of New York, not all, and clerical recruiters do branch out. But we can focus more on the New York metro area, we can focus on the northeastern part of the U.S., we can focus nationwide, we can focus internationally, we can focus more on adult students who've been out of college for a number of years, or we can and will go into the online market more vigorously. I'll make this the last point. I think we still have questions about how well the market understands our brand and our image. There is always the, and Jay has dealt with this for decades, the tension between CUNY and what is CUNY, and the fact that there are colleges with it, and how you market one versus the other. So these are some of the questions that we in enrollment management and working very closely with our partners on the fiscal side, because none of these decisions are without fiscal consequences. These are the kinds of things that we think about and expect that you'll be thinking about and giving us guidance on.
May I start the questions with the committee members to your last point? Explain to us how enrollment and budget work together.
I'm going to let Matt talk about targets, revenue targets, and then I'll jump in.
Just to add, because that's where multi-year projections, and then what do the multi-year enrollment projections look like, and I assume they're declining, how does that match up with budget projections?
Yeah, I think the first thing that you all should be aware of is that every college has what we call a revenue target. So when we allocate funds to a college, and just to use nice round numbers, if we say to a college, "Your allocation is $100 million for this fiscal year," that college would have a revenue target of, let's say, $70 million. And so the expectation is that the college needs to bring in that level of revenue. So the implications are, the enrollment for that college is down that year, they might bring in only $65 million, which then would mean we would have to reduce their budget from $100 million to $95 to make up the difference. Conversely, if their enrollment is really strong and they bring in $75 million of revenue, they keep that. That money's theirs. And so enrollment certainly is one of the key drivers in terms of looking at whether college's fiscal health is stable or not. In terms of out-year implications, you know, that's something that we're analyzing and working with our partners in Bob's office and working with the campuses to look at this dip that we had in the current year, especially at the community colleges, that it looks like we're down 3,000 students, to see if this is, you know, a one-year problem or it's the beginning of a new trend. And if it is, to work with our colleges to try to alleviate that. So something that, you know, we're in constant discussions with, with both Bob's office and with the campuses.
Yeah, and just to add on to what Matt's answer, we will meet, we, my staff and someone from Matt's team, will meet with each college sometime early in the fall to get from them their projections for their enrollment for the next year. We'll have a discussion about, you know, whether they're realistic, or what they can do to increase or decrease and so on, but then we take the numbers that are provided, and Matt's team runs revenue implications based on those enrollments. Obviously, for example, master's students are worth more than undergraduates in terms of revenue. Out-of-state students are worth more than in-state students because they pay a higher tuition rate. So we try to get a projection of what the college's pro forma will yield in terms of tuition revenue.
Let me ask this question of Chair Thompson and the chancellor, and for the benefit of our committee. What is it that you would like our committee to focus on with regard to enrollment? I mean, enrollment in many places, a place where I served as the board chair, is the revenue line, and each year, the operating budget is dependent, more or less, on the enrollment. So you pay close attention to that, and you make these judgments, and you answer these questions about how big do you want to be, the nature of the quality of your program, and those were handled by a committee which was called Admissions and Financial Aid. We don't have such a committee. I'm not suggesting that we create such a committee. I'm just asking on behalf of this committee, what are the issues you want us to consider and to work with the administration on as we have further deliberations about enrollment?
Okay, I will. I'd like to look at, I'm one of those who believes, and now, this will be an interesting compare, an interesting discussion, to see where both of us come out. Number one, I am not a believer in, I believe that a larger institution, or larger institutions, if that's what they can send, creates greater opportunity. That is what we are. That is what CUNY is. So I'd like to understand reasons for decline. Some of it is in graduation, and that's admirable, but is this a multi-year decline? Is it tied, or what do the demographics look like nationwide? So I'd like to understand that. I believe that we should be more competitive. I just don't think that we are right now. I mean, as you point out, what is CUNY? What are the CUNY institutions? I don't believe that there is, you know, 5% of the population in the city of New York that can tell you that. There are many very intelligent adults who don't know what it is. So I believe from tying in, in a rebranding effort and just tying CUNY into what are we, what are institutions, what can we do for you, New York City, New York State, tri-state area, Eastern Seaboard students, I believe that's all part of it. And last but not least, just in that, in that, you know, obviously with a major focus on students in New York City and State, because in so many ways, and for so many of our students, we're their only opportunity at higher education. So I don't want to lose that focus, and I don't want to decline in size. Last but not least, and this is something that came up in our orientation, and I'm not sure if I'm quoting Trustee Farrar correctly, or whether it was my comment, I think that in looking at our online presence, I think the phrase "Stone Age" was used, and that was being, we're just not competitive. And at that discussion, we threw out words, I could go around the room, I bet half this room knows Arizona State University because they advertise so heavily. Do we want to do it on that level? Maybe, maybe not, but I think that this committee can help to determine that also. So that is, you asked, I'm not sure if it matches up with the chancellor. That's what I'd like to see this committee focus on.
Trustee Clark.
Yeah, I want.
Before you ask your question, Chancellor, do you want to comment on what Chair Thompson just said?
Sure, sure. Well, I don't want to comment on what you said, I didn't want to say. Great comment.
It's a separate.
Respond to my question. I was also my own comment as well, but I am largely in agreement. I mean, the first point Chairman made is that we are a public institution about access and providing opportunity first to New Yorkers, and I don't think we are anywhere near the point where we say we have too many students. So we're, the way that we can change the trajectory for the change in the employment market in this country, in the city, in this state, which is going to require higher levels of education for the best jobs, is to bring more students in, more, first of all, more New Yorkers, and then to graduate them. And so we're all about trying to provide more opportunity. That's number one. When Bob said I answered this question, my answer was yes. That was a little bit flip, but there are several things that we need to do that are on that list. First of all, we'd be much stronger in the adult market. A million-plus residents in New York City with some college credit and no degree. I mean, this is a natural market for CUNY to bring these folks in as students so that they can increase their economic opportunity. Online is a huge opportunity, and we're going to see, over the course of the next few years, physical delivery and online start to converge more and more. And if you're not in the online, if you're not in that game, you're going to be left behind. And so we, we're involved right now in a number of strategies, and I'd be happy to talk more with the committee about this specifically, because it's a pretty big subject on its own, about increasing CUNY's presence online, increasing the attractiveness of offerings online, which do a lot of things. They first, offer access to New Yorkers. They second, help us with revenue by increasing opportunities to educate people globally. I mean, there's no distinction between, with borders anymore. Our priority will continue to be New Yorkers. That will always be our, we won't displace them with other students. That will be our priority. But the final thing to come back to, I guess, the chairman of the committee, we may not be in the position of, the exact position of privates that don't have huge endowments that are driven hugely by enrollment and tuition, but we're 45% driven by tuition.
Exactly.
Which is quite significant. And this is, to my knowledge, the first time that we've done this enrollment briefing for this committee. And I asked for it because I wanted particularly the board members and the new board members to see these numbers and to understand what we're looking at. The demographic trends are part of the reason, the competitive, then that puts competitive pressure on our competitors, so it compounds the issue. The online penetration will only increase the competitiveness for our students in New York offered by, whether it's Arizona State or Penn State or SUNY or others. So it's important that we have, I think we monitor this with this committee all the time. It's hugely important to our bottom line. And there are strategies that we are embarking on, I think, that will help us, despite the trends that we, I mean, we aren't going to reverse ourselves, the demographic trends, but we can adapt to them, and we can make changes in our strategies to deal with them.
Well, I want to hear from other committee members, but I, for one, welcome the conversation here at this committee. The words access, affordability, and quality are often talked about in higher education, and they are in tension with each other. I'd like to see greater access. I'd like to see CUNY be more affordable, and I'd like to see our quality product better. Those are difficult things to reconcile, but that's my own point of view. Trustee Clark.
I was thinking, we have 24 institutions, including our community colleges, and I think it would be to our advantage. it would be to our advantage to have a dedicated group of persons who recruit from our high schools. So that we can educate them what institutions do, and they have a menu from which to pick. And if we're saying, well, we think you should go to Bronx Community College, or you should go to Lehman College, if we have persons trained and understand what each of our institutions do, then we can hit all of our high schools, develop relationship with their guidance counselors, and we can do an aggressive recruitment. And we can't be passive about it if we're competing in the place. And if SUNY is able to do that, we should be able to do even more because so many of us are from the communities that can encourage our students to participate. And I, and I think we should internally think about it and not just leave it up to each institution to say, well, you go and you recruit your students. If we can have dedicated persons who will tell the, the high schools which institution does business, which one does engineering, and just do an, a recruitment, and then place our students where we think they will be successful.
So Bob, I, I think we'd all like to see retention better and graduation rates higher. If that results in a shrink in numbers, so be it. That's a good thing. But the down, the downward trend in applicants is of concern, applicants, new freshmen. And that relates to the point that Luda just makes. Are we doing what we should do recruiting-wise? And if not, how do we do better?
Let me, let me ask Claire to answer that question. The short answer is yes, but Claire will, will expand on it.
We answer to many questions today, apparently. Yes. So yes, I mean, we do, right? And, and so on the floor directly above you is the CUNY Welcome Center, which is a place where students can come for information. So, so first, we offer that, right? And we see about twenty-five thousand students walk in the door here every year, looking for information about how to apply, what is needed in order to complete their applications, the kinds of things that Trustee Clark mentioned, you know, where might I go if I'm interested in this particular subject area? We also, in that location, communicate with about eleven thousand students a month via phone and about seven to eight thousand students a month via email. So a very active location, and I encourage you to come and visit us. And to touch on the Chancellor's point, you know, of those visitors, about twen, forty-nine percent of them are folks who are older than twenty-five years of age. Also, a large percentage of them are, are transfer students, a large percentage of them are individuals who have some education outside of the United States, whether that be at secondary school level or at the college level and are trying to understand better the opportunities available to them in the city of New York. We then also have a team that does recruitment on behalf of the university at large. On the undergraduate level, we have a recruiter who's assigned to every high school in the five boroughs. So there's not a high school that doesn't have a person who they can contact. But, you know, also, as Dean Tatchig mentioned, our resources are not what they were, even just a year ago. So folks have a, a bit larger portfolio, which I think is part of what we're seeing in terms of application patterns. So, so one of the things we saw this year that was interesting, in a, in a bad way, I guess, was that although we finished actually slightly up in freshman applications, as you saw, at the moment, we seem to have enrolled fewer new freshmen. But on April fourth, we were still down in freshman applications versus where we had been in the previous year, by almost twelve hundred applications. By the time we got to the end of April, we were finally flat. But that's very late in the admissions cycle for that to be happening, right? And, and some of that, I think, is representative of the degree to which, you know, we can really be present in the, in the community. We do, on average, about fourteen hundred recruitment events in a given year. And that is a combination of activities, could be college fairs that are hosted by, you know, schools, whether that be high schools or community colleges that are looking to help transfer students. Also, sometimes community organizations are hosting those. We also work with elected officials to host CUNY information sessions in their, you know, districts so that all the folks that they're working with are aware of the opportunities that are available to them. We, you know, we might be going and giving a presentation somewhere. We might be in, in a classroom. We might be in a auditorium. We might be on a panel along with other colleges and universities. We might be doing a parent night. So that's representative of a, of a wide variety of different things. We also, every fall, host what we call CUNY counselor conferences. So we have one in every borough, at one of our colleges in each of those boroughs. And we invite high school guidance counselors, teachers, folks who work at community organizations, et cetera, to come and join us at those. And we get usually about five hundred counselors who attend those sessions. So they get an overview, both of the host institution, as well as updates on the university in general. And we try to highlight different programs and activities going on around the university that we think they might not be familiar with or that they would be excited about. So for instance, this upcoming fall, we'll be highlighting journalism across the university and the wide variety of careers that students could go into with the kind of training and opportunity that they receive in the journalism programs across the university. We'll also be talking about the CUNY Service Corps and internship opportunities because we know how important that is to parents and families in terms of making decisions about where their children will go to school. And Dean Anne Kirchner will be at our lunchtime talking about the Women in Technology in New York initiative that she's working on in the university at the moment. So, so those will be some of the kinds of things that, that we'll be highlighting at that event. So that gives you a sense of, of some of the kinds of activities that we're doing. You know, I agree that it's very important that people feel that they have a face-to-face relationship with us, absolutely. And, you know, there's, there's definitely opportunity for improvement there.
Just one question in that regard. It's okay. How many, when, when you talk about individuals who have schools that they are responsible for, how many people do we have who go out and speak at schools?
Yeah, so.
Or engage in recruiting directly in schools?
So we do it at the university level, and then each of our campuses also has an admissions office that has a team of varying sizes that's representing just their individual college. At the central office level, we have about forty individuals that are.
Four-zero.
Four-zero.
Okay.
But, you know, we, we have had more. And those folks are going to, again, you know, the five boroughs, to Long Island, to Westchester, Rockland, Putnam, to, you know, to New Jersey, to.
Check it out.
Other.
You mentioned that the colleges have groups of people as well. How many and how often?
Right. So it.
It, it varies from college to college. We have about four recruiters, and they tend to go mostly to the school that historically have student students to please. Seventy percent of our students come from the boroughs. So we tend to work with the schools that historically, you know, you have a relationship with, and try to coordinate with the central office not to duplicate where there've been some, doing some of the visits and things like that. So, so you have both.
Would it be possible to quantify that for every college?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
And what about at the community colleges? Because in addition to the trend with applicants, which.
Right.
You noted in this report. This current year, community colleges are off three thousand. So are, are, do our recruiters, are we telling potential students for community college, albeit you may have a job, and I'm, I'm not poo-pooing having a job. It's very important for many, many people to have a job. We also think that longer term, your income generation will be much greater if you have that community college degree.
Yes.
Do we make that point? Do the community colleges have the same sort of recruiting effort that the senior colleges?
Yes. I mean, we, we absolutely recruit for the community colleges. And the community colleges do have admissions staff that do recruitment. However, on the whole, I would say that the community colleges rely more heavily on us centrally to, to recruit and to generate applications and for them to then focus more on the, you know, completion and evaluation of those applications and to getting to students actually registered. Again, they do some recruitment, but, but it's not as heavy. And, and again, you know, you have a president in this committee who's been at both a community college and a, and a senior college within CUNY. So could, could give his sense on that perspective. But that's, you know, from, from my seat, that's how it looks. And we do make an effort to, at the university level, really try to introduce students, parents, teachers, counselors, right, all of those folks to the wide variety of opportunities available at the university, and then encourage students to connect with the individual colleges where they're interested, right? So to go for a tour, to visit the campus, to do, you know, things at that particular location. All of the data, both CUNY and National, will tell you that students are much more likely to enroll at institutions that they've been to, right? And, you know, from my perspective, nobody attends CUNY, right? They attend the college of their choice. And so it's, you know, it's our job to make sure that they understand those options and, and how to apply and what's needed and why the various colleges can really, you know, change their lives. And we do get feedback. I mean, I shared a note with my staff last week from a student who now also happens to have a job working on the ninth floor in this building, but who took time, you know, to write and say, I, I became a community college student, even though that wasn't what I thought was going to be my goal in my life because a member of the admissions staff at the university really encouraged me not to give up and to come back and to enroll at a community college. And I earned an associate's degree, and I'm now at Baruch doing very well. And, you know, so I think, you know, we get some positive feedback about that, which obviously is nice. But, so we, we perceive that as, as our role, is to make sure that students really understand those options and that then the colleges are able to, you know, as, as Dean Tatchig mentioned, sort of close the deal.
Cecilia?
I have several questions, and I don't know. He might require answer from several people. The first question was, graduation decreased by almost two thousand. A little bit more about why, especially since different universities are creating different master's programs at the CUNY-wide level. The second question relates to a question that you already had in terms of diversity. Can you correlate enrollment with ethnicity, race, and/or gender? Because, we'll leave it at that. And then the third question comes from page two, undergraduate enrollment. It says, colleges have managed to increase the yield rate of admitted students. How has the university dealt with the increase of thirty thousand new students? For example, practically, does that mean that faculty are being asked to teach more students in the same classroom? Thank you.
And if you could, be, be brief with these answers because we have to wrap up this meeting because there's another one, and there's meetings after the next meeting.
Much of the graduate decline, I think, if I, if I had to attribute it to one cause, it's the decrease in interest in teacher education and business programs, which make up a major part of our graduate portfolio. It depends how you count them, but teacher education and education-related programs are probably fifty percent or more of our master's students. Business follows pretty close behind. We have extensive data, and we can provide data to this committee on the ethnic distribution of students entering CUNY, students graduating from CUNY, students at every level. It's on our public website, but we'll, we'll get you, you know, a summary of, of what we have. In terms of how the colleges handle thirty thousand more students, I think that depends on individual colleges. We did have an increase in the number of full-time faculty. We, we, I'll be blunt here, we never made the target of seventy percent of our instruction being by full-time faculty. That's something we, you know, just not, never been able to do. And the, the increase in enrollment makes it harder and harder to, you know, to reach that goal. There has been no increase in the teaching load for an individual, the contractual teaching load for an individual faculty member. So it would have to be a combination of more full-time faculty, more adjuncts, hopefully to a very minor degree, using technology to supplement the, the classroom experience. And, you know, just harder work on behalf of our faculty and staff. I think that's the biggest, biggest part of it.
Yes. And just to pick up on that point, so I'll be ten seconds. One of the things that has been helpful to us over the last several years in terms of trying to deal with the increased enrollment that we've experienced is that we've added almost a thousand new faculty lines through the revenue that we've had from tuition increases from two thousand and eleven. So that's helped to offset some of the, some of the additional faculty teaching need that we've needed for the enrollment.
I would really appreciate the numbers. That would be very, very helpful in terms of ethnicity because we are concerned, as you mentioned, that the SAT numbers might, I am concerned that the lower enrollment might be students of color.
We can provide a very robust package of data.
So if I may, to wrap this up, because we're going to lose our vice chairman, he's got to go run another committee meeting. I, I think this is very helpful to have this discussion at this meeting, and the Chancellor wants to say something. I'd like to urge, and Chancellor, maybe you consider this with Chair Thompson, that we have a report at each of our meetings about enrollment as it goes throughout the year. Not an extensive report, but just how are we doing? And then overall, I'd like to hear from enrollment as to what it is you want to accomplish, and what do you need to accomplish it that you don't have. So we can have that discussion here. If recruiting is not what it should be, and the impact is a decline in applicants and a decline in enrollment, that has an impact. As the Chancellor pointed out, and as Matt pointed out in his report, tuition is a substantial part of the operating budget each year. The tuition is a number multiplied by the number of students. The number of students determines what that number ultimately will be. Regardless of whether or not TAP is taking up a big chunk of that or not, it's, it's a number that fits into the operating budget. So, as I say, I welcome the ongoing discussion. And I think if you're looking for board input as to whether or not greater access, better affordability, and better quality is something that we want, I think we have to get educated here first, and then we can make a recommendation to the board.
Thanks. I think, I think I got the message that access, affordability, and quality answers yes. So.
I think that's, no one said no, so.
We'll work on, on that. But I will say, you know, I want to remind everybody that we're coming off the two years of the highest enrollment in the history, one-hundred-and-seventy year history of CUNY. So number one year and number two year. That, that's one point. Number two, that line, the fourth bullet, I'm bullish on, on CUNY's enrollment in the future. Yes, demographic trends, economic changes and others have, and competitiveness have, have impacted somewhat, you know, a pretty small way enrollment this year. Traditional enrollment, we still get over sixty percent of every, of New York City high school graduates go on to college. We're never going to get a hundred. But adult education and online is a huge opportunity for us right now where we're not doing everything we can. It's going to be a big part of our strategy going forward. So overall, I'm bullish.
Good. Anything else?
I would just like, if you could.
Yes.
Keep in mind for future presentations, a couple of things. Bob mentioned, you know, getting late April enrollments. And I'd like, as part of our conversation about our enrollment numbers and when students enroll, some information from David Crook's office about retention. Because from a faculty perspective, those students who enroll at the last minute are the first ones that drop out, don't do the work. And that's a tension in terms of our goals with retention and graduation. And the other one is Matt, I think I've said this before, when Matt tells us we've had a thousand new faculty lines, I'd like you to also include as part of that what the net figures look like because we've had huge enrollment growth. And so the proportion of full-time faculty still teaching to our students really hasn't budged significantly.
Those are two good suggestions. And all these things we've asked for, if we can get them before the next meeting, so we can review them beforehand, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
With no more items on the agenda for the Fiscal Affairs Committee, I will move to adjourn this meeting. And thank you all very much. We now move on to the Subcommittee on Investments. And with Chair Thompson returning, he's a member of this committee, we now have a quorum, I believe. So with the quorum, I'll call to order the meeting of the Subcommittee on Investments. And we have one action item, which is the approval of the minutes of April four. And I'll move the approval of Action Item 1A.
So you need a second?
There's a second, and we're all in favor. So the minutes have been approved. We will now go into an executive session. We will now go into an executive session for our further discussion in this investment committee, and we'll have to adjourn for just a minute as we deal with sound and television, and then we'll resume the conversation. We now return to the public session, and with no more items on the agenda, I will move that we adjourn this meeting of the Subcommittee on Investments.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, guys, go back. Sorry about that. He just had to adjourn.
Nothing serious.